Village of Milbrook, this is the March, the May 12th, 2021 meeting of the Village of Milbrook Board of Trustees. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, Clark, could you do a roll call with trustees?
Yes, sir. Mayor Colpey? Deputy Mayor Herzog?
Here.
Trustee Cantino?
Here.
Trustee Arbogast?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any minutes, Sarah?
Yes, I sent them.
You did?
I did.
Have the trustees besides me had a chance to look at the minutes?
I did.
I reviewed them.
Any changes, corrections, requests?
Not on my part.
None, same.
Okay, to admit I have not reviewed them, however, is there a motion from a trustee to approve the minutes as so written?
Awesome move.
In a second?
All second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll, uh, not vote since I didn't read them yet. Okay, that's enough to pass the motion, though. Thanks, Sarah.
No problem.
Okay, next, next on the agenda is the voucher approval. And I just want to reemphasize again to all the department heads that we're ending the fiscal year 5/31, and that we want to get all of your invoices in hopefully by this month, but in time for us to have a review of them and approval of them at the next meeting, which is June 9th, right? You know Nicole does her work all the way up to the last minute, but I do want every department head to work on getting to us as much as possible, all the invoices are being incurred for this month, so we can close out the fiscal year and, uh, move on to the, uh, annual report. Any questions or concerns about that from any of the department heads?
Nope. Clear.
All good here.
All right, then let's go to the, uh, vouchers. So we've got two sets of vouchers here. First off, uh, vouchers from date of May 6th. In the general fund, thirteen thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars. And the Bedrock H Fund, this is paying the second last Milne's bill, one hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-three cents, a total of one hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars. Can I get a motion to accept the vouchers included therein?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. You see the words down there that this is going to include the payment to Milne's of number seven for the, uh, work they still have, one more, I think, one more invoice to come, and Sarah says that Delaware has that invoice in hand, they'll soon be delivering it to us. Okay, and by the way, the reason why we paid that is because we received from EFC the final payment of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And we've been sitting on that, uh, number seven Milne's invoice, uh, for a month or two. Wanted to get that paid ASAP when the money came in, and that's why we did this, okay? Uh, as far as the current vouchers, which you've got a report sent from, uh, Nicole today, and the details are in her, on her desk right now. For May 12th, we have vouchers in the general fund, twelve thousand thirteen dollars, the water fund, eleven thousand two hundred fourteen dollars, the sewer fund, twenty-two thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars, and for Milbrook Restoration, two hundred fifty-five dollars, for a total of ninety-one thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Can I get a motion to accept those vouchers?
A motion.
In a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
By the way, included in those vouchers is the work done to repair the roof on the back of the village hall. That work was estimated at seven thousand dollars, it came in at six thousand seventy-five dollars, thank you very much to that for, to, uh, to Bob. And I'd asked Sarah and Karen to use the six thousand dollars that's in the, um, village hall um, trust fund, or restoration fund to pay for that, okay, as we previously discussed. So you'll see that, uh, when Sarah shows her, uh, bank accounts, there is at the bottom the six thousand dollars in the, uh, Milbrook Hall renovation fund, or whatever it's called. So that's how we're going to pay for the work that was done to repair that roof, all right? Okay. Before we go on, a couple of points I want to make, um, specifically to, uh, the fire and to the police is that, um, we've got a request from the Milbrook Golf and Tennis Club. They're going to hold their annual fireworks event again this year. It's going to be on July 3rd at 6:30 with a rain day of July 4th. And I wanted, uh, Matt and, uh, Officer Jared to, uh, know about that. And, um, I assume that you'll be able to do the same level of, uh, preparation and, um, control of Church Avenue, Church Street, as well as, I guess, 343, is that true? Officer Wood?
Uh, yeah, we will implement the same plans as the, uh, the last several years, uh, that we've done it, and so the last few ones were very uneventful, so, uh.
Good, that's, that's my favorite kind. Do you need?
Uneventful events, uh, we'll put those same plans in motions with the same, uh, level of staffing that historically has proven to be effective.
Good. And do you need state police help, and how do you take care of 343?
Uh, we don't specifically need, uh, assistance from the state police, we usually let them know that we have, uh, something going on, and they, they kind of steer their patrols our way. Um, uh, historically, we rope off, uh, 343 with, uh, no parking on the, on the shoulders from basically the monument to, um, Altamont Road, sometimes as far up as, uh, Nine Partners Lane.
Good idea.
Uh, and short of that, we, uh, Church Street will be closed from, uh, Milbrook High School to 343, uh, only for foot traffic.
Okay. And you work with, uh, Matt and the fire, fire department for whatever help they can provide as far as vehicles and stuff?
Uh, yeah, we, we usually make, uh, we usually do, do it independently, I mean, obviously, we're in communication with them, but, uh, we, we usually can get it done now with our own resources.
All right, good. Okay, so, uh, do you need any more notice? I'm going to just respond to this request from the, uh, superintendent there, that, uh, the general manager, that we're okay with this, we'll be prepared, right?
Uh, that, that's fine on my end.
Okay, good. One other thing I want to make note of before we get into the department reports is that, um, we talked last month, we approved a, uh, Memorial Day parade requested by the VFW, and, um, we got a request from the Dutchess County, um, Veterans Association, I think. They're going to do a drive-through convoy on Memorial Day, going to be driving throughout the county, and we coordinated with Adam Roach, Roach, I think his name is, so that the, um, convoy is going to go through Milbrook around 9:55, from like 9:55 to 10:05. And so I made a request to, uh, the VFW who's organizing the parade, that they hold off the start of the parade until the convoy has gone through, so Jared, you need to know about that. Just for the sake of, you're holding traffic up, I imagine for the start and, uh, for the duration of the parade, and we want that convoy to be able to proceed through the village.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, we'll, we'll work that out. I believe Officer Aloizio is working that day, and, uh, she and I'll, we'll get it done in conjunction with the VFW.
Very good, thanks a lot for that. Okay, if there's no questions about those two, um, things I wanted to bring to the front, then let's go to the department reports, starting with fire and rescue, so Matt?
Uh, Ted's on, on, on the Zoom also.
Okay, so whoever wants to give the, uh, report, Ted, you're welcome.
Yep, I'm here, my apologies, uh, I walked into my office and my computer said, updating, twenty-eight percent complete, so I had to use a different machine, and it took me a couple of minutes to get logged in.
No problem, go ahead.
So our, uh, report for, uh, April is on the screen. Uh, eight automatic alarms, fifty-five EMS calls, three motor vehicle accidents, one structural fire call, two brush and grass fires, two wires down calls, one good intent call, two standbys, two carbon monoxide alarms, and a service call for a total of seventy-seven alarms for the month of April, pretty busy month. Uh, the NDP paid unit responded fifty-one times, the volunteer ambulance responded four times, and we had twenty-five other alarms where the members went to help, uh, with the EMS calls. Uh, we went mutual aid, uh, for EMS twelve times to other districts, and we received mutual aid twice for, uh, EMS, none for fire given or received last month.
The twelve mutual aid given by EMS, is that where the volunteers go to help us on NDP?
Uh, no, that's typically, that's the NDP unit, I don't think the volunteer unit went on any, uh, mutually calls last month.
Okay.
Uh, most often what happens is the, uh, NDP unit responds as an ALS, Advanced Life Support, uh, paramedic level assist to, uh, either Pleasant Valley, Union Vale, or Stanford, that's those common ones.
All right, any questions for Ted about the, uh, fire and rescue? No, if not, thank you Ted, let's move on. Officer Jared?
Good evening, uh, in front of you, you'll see the April report for the Village of Milbrook Police, we had a total of a hundred and nine, uh, incidents. Uh, the, the corresponding blotter numbers are, are written there. Um, uh, we'll, we'll just go through these briefly and quickly, uh, for traffic, uh, we had ten traffic tickets written, uh, also ten parking ticket, tickets, uh, five property damage auto accidents, one personal injury auto accident, uh, ten vehicle and traffic complaints, uh, two parking complaints, and two road hazard, um, incidents. Uh, we assisted other police agencies seven times, the fire department seven times, uh, EMS twelve times, and completed the, uh, Town of Washington Court Detail twice. Um, we made one arrest in the month of April, we had three domestic incidents, three disorderly conducts, and three, uh, trespass, uh, that disorderly conduct could, could just be a disturbance to it, uh, it might not necessarily reach the criminal or violation level, uh, just as a side note.
Okay.
Uh, community service, uh, two suspicious activities, we assisted citizens three times, completed, uh, eleven house checks, uh, two property checks, those are different than the house checks, those are possibly businesses or, um, government buildings that we found either an open door, an open window in, and that would generate, uh, an incident for us, uh, so that we could let the property owners know. Uh, three burglar alarms, uh, four instances of, uh, lost and found property, uh, one vehicle lockout, uh, six foil requests, three civil complaints, two animal complaints, and we assisted, uh, the sheriff's office and the state police with, uh, Milbrook Marathon. And that, that concludes the list of the incidents, any questions on that? No?
No.
Um, I have a, a couple other updates, as for the new car that's, uh, still in the parking lot, we're patiently awaiting, uh, the lights that are backordered through Whalen, through the, the company that produces the emergency lighting, uh, have been talking with the upfitting company, we are going to send the car out to be lettered ahead of time while we're waiting for the lights to come in and, uh, for it to get set up.
Good.
Also, uh, it's going out for new tires on Friday, uh, so we'll all be super safe.
Oh, no, wait, that's the, uh.
Yes, the, uh, the twenty sixteen Ford, our current Ford, is going out for tires on Friday, sorry. I had them listed under the same one. Um, also, for the month of April, uh, myself and Officer Naughton completed our annual firearms qualifications, uh, the remaining four employees will have them done within the next month. And then from, from here on out in the future, we'll, uh, we'll schedule it again with two days, but most likely a little closer together so that we're all on the same schedule.
Okay, how much did that, uh, training cost?
Um, it cost us, uh, off the top of my head, the, the voucher for the ammunition was right around, uh, high six hundreds, low seven hundreds for the ammunition, um, the, the trainers, um, did this one for us, uh, on the arm, uh, as a personal favor to myself.
Nice.
And the range was, uh, was rented for us, uh, free of charge also.
Wow, okay.
So, uh, other than, so for myself and Officer Naughton, we were each paid the, you know, the six hours that we were at the range, uh, plus the ammunition, so it probably, to have the two of us qualified, it costs us, I would say, r- right around a thousand bucks.
Okay, and you've got plans to do the other three, uh, three officers?
I was, uh, it, we do have plans, I was waiting for, uh, Officer Taney to come back from, uh, a medical leave so that we could do all four of them at the same time.
Yeah.
Now that he's back, uh, we'll, we'll get that scheduled within the month.
Right.
It should be no later than the end of June. I'd prefer that it be the, before the end of May, but, um, scheduling may not allow it.
Yeah, okay, I, I prefer June, by the way, if you, if you have a choice.
Just from that. I also prefer to have it done before June, but again, it's, um, since he was out and where he was kind of a holdup on the, on the second set of people going, I just, we have to, you know, make sure that we can make it happen. It may, it may require me to come in and cover the road while they go to the range,
Mm-hmm.
Which unfortunately will add a little bit more expense to the, you know, to the second round of qualifications, but.
Okay. I don't want to delay a qualification too much, but, uh, from a budget point of view, I'd prefer that was done after May 31st.
Oh, after May 31st, not before.
After, yeah. Okay.
All right, yeah, all right, then, uh, so then I'll have it scheduled for June.
Very good, thanks so much.
All right.
Okay, the police reform modernization plan, uh, between you and Mike, uh, we going to discuss that?
Uh, yeah, if, if you would like me to touch on it, or you want Mike to touch on it, or we can both do it, doesn't bother me.
You guys tell me.
Uh, um, we were in communication about, uh, just before, uh, the meeting about an hour ago, and uh, it's really up to you whether you wanted to hand, me handle it during my notes period, or you wanted a separate item, so it's up to you, Mayor.
I'd like to do it now, since we're talking about police and everyone's here.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll go over a few things, and, uh, the people involved, who will be Officer Wit in some of these, as well as other trustees can jump into to, uh, make additions or corrections in case I, uh, I make a mistake, or, or I don't understand something that we talked about, so.
Okay.
In terms of the management plan, it's coming along nicely in terms of implementing, uh, many of the twelve, uh, parts of it that were sent to, sent to all being in April, uh, for approval. And currently, at this point, uh, Trustee Cantino is working with, with Officer Wit uh, on reviewing the village code to see if laws that are concerning police enforcement and signage that are in the code need to be updated, removed, or changed in some way, uh, as well as making any other recommendations about the code and police work that the board needs to consider. Uh, they've met at least once, and they plan on meeting, uh, multiple times now, at least in the next three to four months to, uh, not necessarily finish it in that period of time, but to continue to make doing it. Uh, second, uh, at this point.
Mike, just a point of clarification there, so I've, I've discussed this with both Vicki and with, uh, Officer Jared, and I'd like that to be part of the overall code update that we're going, and I like, actually, I think there's some more important things, some more severe issues with the code that we should be doing first, and I'd like that to be pushed out a while, um, so that we can work on the more imminent issues with the code first. And I had this question, I know with, I think with both of them, if I don't mind, I don't know what the date is for that, but I'd like that to be kind of sitting out in the, in the future, I know, I think Officer Wit's going to go and and do his due diligence to go pour through the code and do the right updates, it may take him a while, and I said, that's fine, take as much time as you want, uh, because we have more other things to work on in the code first, all right?
Right, I mean, myself and Trustee Cantino, we, I mean, if we get it completed ahead of time, then it's completed, and as, as the board sees fit to, to put it into the, the, the overhaul of the code, that's fine. I do, I will end up working with Bob a little bit too on some of them, uh, just because some of them, some of the codes actually in, includes like detailed measurements, a hundred and fifty-six feet from this location and, and this stuff, so if Bob can come out with me one of these days with his little, you know, role measurer thing, and, uh, and we'll get it done, and if we get it done ahead of time before the board's ready for it, then it's, then it's done and it's out of the way, and you guys, uh, can, uh, address it at your leisure.
Okay, fine. All right, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, uh, the second thing is that, uh, I mentioned that Mike Murphy had led the, in the last meeting, uh, would be joining the, uh, Community Review Board, and I'm not sure of how you want to make that an official appointment, whether you want to do that by, uh, it has to be done by resolution, or a motion is made, and then it's voted on as a regular motion during our meeting, but that's, uh, you know, that's, that's, needs to happen at some point in order to be able to make appointments to the, uh, Community Review Board. But it's ready to go whenever we want to take action.
So is that a position that he'd be sworn into, Mike Murphy?
I would assume so, it, I know it's a, it's a volunteer position like ZBA and Planning Board, but I assume he would have to get sworn in.
All right, so Sarah, how should we do this?
I mean, we're kind of creating the board, so it's kind of starting from scratch.
Right, so does that take a motion, or does it take a resolution? What does it take?
That might be a good question for Ian, because I'm, I'm not sure about committees.
Okay, Ian, you're on the board, or you're on the call?
I, I am, um, so.
Let me explain what it is, Ian, so this is a, it's a Police Complaint Review Board. It's going to consist of, uh, Mike Herzog, Mike Murphy as a volunteer resident, and Officer Wit. Um, and, uh, that, that's the panel. Um, Mike has also issued to the trustees a, uh, a process, basically taken from the town of Poughkeepsie, and that we will be using. And the question now is, the members of the board, how do we make that a formal statement?
Have you created the committee already, or, or are you, you're doing that, you need to do that?
We need to do that.
I, I would do it by resolution, and then you can state in the resolution what authority you're, you know, basing your determination to create the committee, and you can appoint or, um, yeah, appoint the members to the committee right in that same resolution.
Okay, Mike, can you, could you draft what that resolution would look like, and then just run it by Ian?
Sure, that's fine, that, that's not a problem, that's not a problem, and I think that it depends also, do you want the ma- naming the people who will be on the Community Review Board as a separate item, or do you want the policies and procedures on how we're going to proceed as a board as part of the same thing?
I'd like it to be the same thing, unless anyone's going to objection to that, make it all together.
I will, I personally believe you, uh, would set up the policy and procedure for the board and the complaint process separately, naming, you know, within the policy and procedure, you'll say the officer in charge or designee as position one, a board of, a board of trustees member, uh, position number two, and a community member number three, and then make the appointments afterwards. Because in that way, you're not having to change the policy and procedure every time the seat changes.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, that sounds good, that's fine, and, and as I had indicated, uh, and Officer Wit had indicated, we're using a template, and we haven't sat down, meaning Officer Wit, myself, and Mike Murphy, to be able to go over it and to make sure it, it's, uh, usable for ourselves, although looking at it, Mike, looking at it, uh, previously, and Officer Wit looking at it, it looks very close to what we can use, but there probably will be some alterations or changes needed to the way it's presently, uh, worded, so that, that, that needs to be done in the next month or so, and, uh, we should be able to have that ready to go for June's meeting, I would think.
Okay, good, yeah, I would like you to, uh, personalize it, so it is, you know, Milbrook specific, there's a lot of things referenced Poughkeepsie, which is fine, but, uh, if you could do that as part of your work this month, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, and it'll go, it'll go out as a draft first, because there's going to be, I'm sure, some, uh, potential revisions or comments by other trustees who might want to have suggestions to, uh, how this is going to work, so we'll take a shot at maybe having it ready by June, but definitely having something concrete, uh, fairly soon after.
Okay, good, any other questions or comments about that?
No, just a matter of taking that, that model policy from Poughkeepsie, and like you said, making it our own, there's a lot of references uh, to positions that don't exactly, that don't exist in our police department and, and things like that.
Okay, okay, good, Mike, what else?
Uh, in terms of that, uh, the last thing I was going to mention is that, uh, Trustee Arbogast continues to explore potential grants and funding for use of body cameras, uh, storage of, of software, videos, et cetera, that accompany it, and possible police equipment in the future, she's done some research, but continues to work on, uh, getting more information for us.
If she'd like to get ahold of me, I do have, um, at least one contact, you have some, some places for us to, to start looking for some of those, not necessarily the body cameras, but, uh, other equipment.
Yeah, Jared, I'd like to sit down and have a conversation with you in regards to what you've tried to do before and how I can help.
Absolutely, uh, most of the time I'm, uh, I'm here Monday through Friday, so just flag me down.
Okay, that'll be, I'll do that.
Check with the clerk, she'll, uh, she'll give you my phone number.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's my report for the, uh, for the police reform and modernization plan at this point, that pretty well wraps that part up, so.
Thank you very much.
Unless there's any questions from any of the trustees or anyone else, then we can move on.
Sounds like there isn't, okay, let's move on then. Okay, Bob, Public Works?
Okay. Uh, for the, the past month, uh, we repaired the escape grate at the village hall, repaired a manhole cover on North Avenue, removed the damaged street, uh, street light on Franklin Avenue, and Milbrook Electric reinstated the new light. Uh, street sweeping was performed by East Coast Road Maintenance. We cleaned out the jailhouse building, mowed and trimmed all village properties. We did clean up around Village Hall, picked up new flower barrels, and put out all the flower barrels on Franklin Avenue, picked up flowers from Milbrook Gardens and placed them in the flower barrels, began trimming low hanging branches, uh, that are hanging over sidewalks. Uh, four problem trees were removed by Out on a Limb. Nineteen, the nineteen ninety-two Topkick was sold at auction, uh, was sold for twenty-one hundred dollars. Uh, brush continues through May 31st, and, uh, the new roof was installed on the rear bunker of, uh, Village Hall. Uh, we planted flowers and mulched around the flagpole at Village Hall, uh, continued to fill various potholes around the village. Uh, the new furnace is being installed on Monday and Tuesday in the village hall. Uh, also, not on the list, uh, three new trees, um, being funded by the Tree Committee are being planted, uh, I believe, next week, possibly Friday. Uh, one at the Village Garage, one on Elm Drive, and one on Merritt Avenue. Um, I do have a, a, a question for the board, um, the line painting, the street line. Um, I do have a, a, a question for the board. Um, the line painting, the street line painting, crosswalks and so forth. Uh, I was asked by the company that is doing it, it's a new company for us because the old company went out of business. Uh, they requested, um, painting the lines at night, overnight, like at three or four in the morning. Um, because traffic problems and time scheduling and things like that, uh, minimal amount of noise. I just wanted to, um, ask if that would be a problem.
Not with me. Anybody?
I don't have any objections.
I have no objections. I'm up if you want me to supervise them.
You can get them rewarded coffee or something else if they do a good job. How's that, Buffy?
There you go. There you go.
Alright, Bob, sounds like no one's got a, got a problem with it.
Alright, great.
What, what's the damaged street light on Franklin? What was this?
I'm saying it again?
What damaged street light, number three? What is that?
Uh, the street light across the street from, I had sent you a text on it, uh, the street light across from, um, Stewart's was hit by a, a, a truck.
Oh.
And luckily, luckily, we had a, uh, we had a replacement light and all the, everything that needed to be put on. So we had it done that, I believe that day or the next day it was put, put back on.
Huh. What happened, Buffy? Oh, you're on mute.
Can't hear you.
Sorry. Um, it was right in front of Guernsey, you know, it's in Guernsey and the law office right there, uh, Presser Law Office. And I believe it was, um, it was a garbage truck, I think, that hit it.
Yes.
Yeah, Welsh accidentally hit it.
One of Welsh's trucks.
Yeah.
So we negotiated, we negotiated a fee.
Excellent.
That's why we're getting the second pickup for free.
Okay, good. That sounds like a good deal to me. We, we already had the extra lights, right?
Yeah. Yeah, all the, uh, there was no perk, there was no, uh, purchasing of any, um,
Alright.
When we had the light in the arm and the, the pole was fine. It wasn't the pole, it was the, the actual light that, that, uh, fell and broke.
Okay. By the way, you mentioned it. Have they started a second for, uh, weekly pickup, Welsh?
Uh, I do not know that. I know they were scheduled to this week.
Yeah, okay.
It looks like they're locking the locks again, or at least putting the locks back on. We'll see how long that lasts.
Yeah, okay.
But, um,
Buffy, you, you have a comment?
When, when, uh, when are the pickups supposed to be? Just so I sort of know, because.
Um, I, I know they were supposed to pick up their regular pickup and then three days later.
Wasn't that Monday? Don't they do it Monday and then what, Friday or Thursday?
Yeah, I think they pick up on Monday and so they're gonna pick up Monday and then three, probably Thursday before the weekend.
Yeah, I think it's Tuesday they pick up.
Two, Tuesday, Friday is even better. Okay, good.
Okay. Great.
So Bob, I wanted to ask you about streetlights, um, before this thing. Alright, so now, now we have another streetlight issue, but so talk, talk about the three streetlights that went dead.
Yeah, we have, um, we have someone working on it. Unfortunately, we don't want to just start digging. So we're, we're waiting on Central Hudson to come in with their equipment that locates broken lines. Um, they've been assessed as to the problem by Millbrook Electric. Uh, and it was assessed that he thinks that it's coming from one pole and that's, that's, um, taking down the other two as far as the power goes. So hopefully it's just a one, one pole issue. It's not every pole, because the coincidence was, you know, it's, it's just, uh, quite a coincidence if they all failed at one time.
So just, just as backup, because these, these lights turn out to be more, more of a problem. Anyway, um, we have, we have two lights that are already out, but we got the one in front of the old forces. We got the one across the street in front of the fox and the hare, right? They, they've been dead for a while.
That's a, yeah, that's a separate issue and he's again gonna wait for Central Hudson to find out exactly where the break.
Okay, so, so in addition to those two that have been dead for a while, recently three more, recently three more died all at the same time.
Right. And those, and he's attributing that to one line that powers all three.
Okay.
So there was a break. Um, he's thinking at, from the one near the deli and they, they're, they're connected. The way these lights were connected was, you know, it was just ridiculous. They, they cross streets, they, they're, there's no rhyme or reason to how they wire these. Um, but we pretty much have it down how they are wired from previous problems.
Okay, but in the invoices, there's five hundred dollars there for troubleshooting for the streetlights. I mean, I was hoping we could hold off all the, all the cost of doing this repair until after the end of the, the fiscal year. Is that possible?
I think it's possible. But I mean, even if he, you know, we can work with Mike. Um, even if he gets, gets the okay from Central Hudson or figures out where it is, uh, if it's very close, I'll just ask him to hold the bill until June.
Okay.
I don't think I have a problem with that.
Well, if, if he, if he does the, the work in May and submits the bill in June, it still counts in this fiscal year, by the way. Okay?
Okay.
So what I want to ask is, if he's gonna be doing any serious work, that he kind of waits till June first to do it?
Alright, not a problem.
Okay.
I like the, the speed of Central Hudson, it's probably gonna be, probably gonna be very close to that anyway.
A self fulfilling prophecy? So, um, these three trees that you guys planted, so, um, how did you decide where you're gonna plant these trees? Who, who's, is this the, the tree, shade tree?
Yeah. Shade Tree Committee. Uh, the one in front of the Village Garage is replacing two that we had to take down. Um, the one on Elm Drive is also replacing two that were taken down last year. And the third one on, uh, Merritt Avenue is again replacing two, uh, large trees that had to come down.
And so how is this determined? Like, do our residents request?
It's, sometimes the residents will request them, um, if we take something down real close to their property. And, and if it's, if it's reasonable, we will replace it there. Um, but these were, uh, the trees we did take down left really big holes, um, on, on the three streets. So, uh, we made a judgment and figured they'd be a real good place to put them.
Alright. And are these trees, if they're near sidewalks, to kind of go, go down as opposed to go sideways and erupt sidewalks?
Yeah, we, um, uh, yeah, the, the three, the three trees are all, they're not real giant trees either. They're not gonna grow into lines. There's no overhead lines.
Okay.
We're gonna try and avoid planting anything on their, on their lines because it just creates a problem and, um, these are all, uh, away from any electric or power lines.
Okay, good. Any more questions for Bob? Alright, thanks, Bob.
Okay.
Uh, Scott showed up.
I'm here.
Hi, Scott. Go ahead.
Right. So we'll start with the water for the month of April. Uh, total water produced four million nine hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred and eleven gallons. Average daily flow was one hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred gallons. Performed all monthly maintenance and sampling. Uh, Health Department inspected the new facility and gave the certificate of project completion. Uh, the gate that was damaged this winter has been replaced by Adam's fence, so that's all fixed.
Great.
Uh, flushed all the hydrants in town and had to take three of them out of service, which we plan to fix, uh, after June.
What, what does, what does that mean, Scott? You took them out of service? So they're no longer available to the fire department?
Correct. I, I've made Ted aware.
Okay.
Uh, they will not shut down completely. So I had to close them down at the valve. And even that, they're still dripping a little bit, so. Um, but two of them were on my schedule to replace. The other one, we will, we'll put in that schedule to replace them this year.
Okay.
Um, and currently we are investigating a pressure issue on Alden Place, actually Alden Acres specifically. Um, so we are working on that and I've got scheduled, I think, for June first to get out there and do some more work. So I gotta coordinate with the school, because I gotta shut the school off in order to do some more testing.
Okay. Um, while you're, okay, while you're there, can you discuss the, the meter at the school?
Yeah, the high school water meter, uh, we read the meters in March. And the school contacted our office because their bill was zero, which is obviously not correct. Uh, so I went back to read and I had one of my guys go inside the school to read it. And the numbers have not changed, so that meter obviously is not the, I mean, the water's flowing through the meter, but it's not registering a flow. So therefore the meter's gotta be replaced. I had asked, um, my contact with, uh, for the meter company, Census, um, if we could just replace the register, which is on top of the meter that reads it, because sometimes you can do that, especially with the smaller meters. This one is a three inch meter. Um, and he said they, that you can't because that meter is no longer manufactured because it was, it's an older style, so it'll have to be replaced.
Okay, and the cost?
Uh, the meter itself is about nineteen hundred dollars.
What's the full cost? Do, do they actually replace?
I.
And labor?
Well, labor's gonna be probably a few hundred dollars, because it's gonna be probably a couple hours, because it's, it's rather large and you gotta unbolt it and put the new one in and barring any problems.
Is the school without water while you're doing that work?
Yeah, so I, at this point, I can wait till after they're out, because by the time I read again, which is next month, they're not gonna get much of a, a bill. And I don't even know how long it takes to get the meter. I didn't even ask, but, um, depends if it's in stock or not. Usually the meters that we've got that are larger are inch and a half, two inch. Sometimes you can get them in a week, but if they're not in stock, then you're waiting weeks. So, um, I would, I mean, at this point, I think it's best to wait till after the school's out to change it. But.
And, and what happens as far as the, uh, water usage? So what, what's the, so between now and when the meter's changed?
Yep.
What are we doing about their water usage? We're estimating or what?
Estimating, yes.
Estimated. Okay, fine.
Yeah, Dawn estimated the last bill and we'll do the next one, which will be in June. If we can, if I can get it timed right, we can change the meter out roughly not long after we read the meters. So then they'll have a full, you know, regular bill the next time we go in September.
Okay. Um, who should pay for this?
Well, therein lies the question. Um, there's nothing, you know, written down anywhere, how to handle any of this. Typically, the way we've done things here, um, when you get a, usually it only happens when, when we put new meters in, which we've done, or if they, if, uh, say a building gets put in and they request a two inch meter. Typically, the village pays for the cost of a one inch meter or less. One inch meters are roughly two hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, and then the, the cost of the, the, the difference would be paid by the owner, but that's, goes with the permit and all that stuff. I, when we did the meter change outs, I honestly don't recall, but I think the village paid for all the meters that were, like, because I know, like, Bennett Commons had two inch meters, um, we had to change all those. Um, so when we did all that, if memory serves me right, the village paid for all that. Like I said, there's nothing, there's no, nothing in the code, nothing's written down anywhere that I've ever found. I mean, there's no water code anyway.
Okay, yeah. So, that's one of the things we need to update in the code.
That's correct.
Yes. And you already did a lot of good work to, uh, help us get that started as soon as we reinitiate that activity. Um, so I guess the question to the board, the trustees is, how should we proceed? Um, I think he's saying it's gonna cost in the range of like, I'm gonna say something shy of twenty-five hundred dollars. I'm saying parts and labor. Um, so should we just do it as a village? Should we go to the, the school district and ask them to pay? Should we ask for a fifty fifty? What should we do? Opinions?
I think, hey, I'm sorry. I, I think based on past practice, since we, since we have changed out almost every meter in the building without cost, in the village, excuse me, without cost over the, over the past nine years that I've been here, then I think it's, uh, appropriate that if you have a malfunction with the meter itself, that, that's not necessarily on the, on the owner. Uh, on the other hand, we've also had a policy that Scott can either back me up or correct me on, which is if you have a meter, it will be replaced by the village for free. However, if you request to have a new meter put in because you think the old meter is not functioning properly, then that's on the, then that's on the homeowner. So in this case, yeah, so in this case, it's a bad meter, whatever. It's not the school's fault. It's just a bad meter and therefore I would go with, you know, that's, that's, that, that falls on us unless the owner is making a special request to change the meter out for some other reason. And it's not, you know, it's broken, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's me.
Vicky, your thoughts?
I, I think I would go with past practice, um, I, because I can't think of any reason to change it. So if we have traditionally paid for the meters when they just break, as opposed to the owner asking that we change them out, I can't see any reason why we shouldn't continue doing that.
Okay, Buffy?
I agree, but I think we definitely need to discuss about updating the code, because maybe, you know, after we put a meter in, there should be some kind of, um, you know, if it fails or they want to upgrade or whatever, that there's a certain cost that the village will pay or the, the use, the person, you know, the property owner or whatever. So I think we definitely need to review that.
Okay, so based on this discussion, and I, I agree with everybody about we need to update the code, but for this immediate thing, I think we're saying we want, uh, Scott to replace the meter. My request would be for Scott, can you do that after June first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so with that, I think we've agreed that Scott should go and replace the meter at the school as soon as he can after June first, right?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Okay, while we're on Warren Stewart, is this the appropriate time to talk about Howard's request?
Will you want me to do the sewer report first, then we can talk about it?
Let's do this one report first. Sure, go ahead.
Unless anybody had questions about the water before we move on.
Yep.
No.
Any questions? No?
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. Over to Sewer Plant for the month of April. Had total effluent flow of four million six hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-eight gallons. Average daily flow, one hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred gallons. Had three point six inches of precipitation. Uh, performed all sampling and maintenance, earth care, hauled sludge. Uh, clarifier number one went down again. Uh, we've removed the flights and put back into service. And I had listed here that we were awaiting parts to repair, but we've actually since repaired that, uh, last week, so that's been done. It's, uh, back up and running. Um, cleaned filter beds and the EPA has contacted me and they will be onsite in June to do an inspection of the collection system. I'm currently working on a questionnaire that they had, it was like four pages long, so filling that out.
Any questions for Scott regarding the sewer? Okay, I, I wanna go back to the water for a minute. I forgot about this. Uh, you were asking about replacing the filters in the water filtration plant with, um, new, different kind of filter. How's that going?
Uh, I had, still working on getting, uh, approval from the company to get an account set up, so.
Okay.
I haven't, I have not, uh, gotten that done.
So, so Delaware is okay with you doing that? You're going for filters that are less than the, uh?
Yeah, I, I, I believe you're copying an email, but Robert, the, the design engineer, had checked out the filters I was looking at, um, and he said they will be fine. As long, as long as they, they meet an SF standards, which they do. Um, but they are a significant. Um, but they are a significant. Uh, cost savings, um. Thousands of dollars. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, uh, it's gonna save us thousands of dollars, so. Um, and I've actually had the same brand at a much smaller facility, but I, I use them there, so.
All right, good.
Um, so hopefully, you know, but again, if they don't work, or they, or they don't. You know, I don't say don't work, but if they don't seem to be as nice as the other ones, then we'll, we'll. Deal with it, but I, I think they'll be fine.
Okay, fine.
So, and once I get that. Credit application, Nicole and I have been working on that, and, um, once I get that done, I get an account set up, then we can order them. And have them here, so.
All right. All right, can you all lead the discussion about the request from Howard?
Yes, um, so, uh, I don't think I have the letter, here it is. Um. Request to hook up to the sewer on an empty lot on Maple Hill Drive. I don't think I got the address here, but, um, well, it's right next to Howard was at forty nine Maple Hill Drive, so. There's an empty lot there that's been there for, I don't know how long, longer than I've been here, so, um. When that sewer and water went in up there, they ran the sewer and water. To the lot, there's a water service line on the lot, and there's also a sewer tap on the lot. Um. So they're looking to. You know, go through the whole permit process so they can have the hookup at a future date. Um, willing to pay the, the fees and all, everything that needs to be done. And there's no building or anything on it yet. Um. So the, the only thing that, as far as the village would have to do, if, if you go ahead with this, um, is. As part of our Speedy's permit, we have to write a letter to the DEC requesting permission to add. Uh, another customer. Which in the past, it's been more formality, because we have to. Prove that we have eliminated, I think, three times the amount of INI that we are gonna put into the system with. The customer, so if you're looking at one, you know, single family home, hundred and fifty gallons a day, maybe. We've done way more than that removal, so.
Okay.
But again, it's just, you know, still gotta go through the whole process, writing a letter, they send us back a letter. You know, so as far as whether you know, want, allow them to hook up, that's on you guys.
Okay. Um, and so this is just a request to be able to, um, make, make the request to hook up, is that, that what this is?
Yeah, right, well, basically, he's, anybody that wants to hook up to the sewer. Has to write a letter to the village requesting, because we have, right, the, or say we, the village has to write a letter to. The DEC requesting it, so I always ask anybody that wants to do it to send a letter to the mayor requesting it. Um, so that way everything's in writing.
All right, and, and Howard, you're, you're actually making this request now, or this is just a heads up that you will be making requests in the future, or your son will be making requests in the future?
Well, we're making the request now, and what we're trying, we're willing to pay the sewer benefit assessment right now. Even though we're not going to be hooking up to the future, and he also wants to pay, he's willing to pay the. Other two bond assessments, there's two other fees, I think they're five hundred dollars apiece. Uh, one is sewer connection, and one is for the water connection, and there's a bond involved. And whatever you want him to pay, he will pay. He, up in Albany, he travels a lot for work, he just asked me to. Represent him, and he'd like to clean it up as much as possible. Because it's difficult for him to be around here sometimes because of his work. So that's, we're not requesting to connect anything at the moment. So the only thing that would happen, I believe, is we would pay the sewer benefit assessment, and there would be. No bills because we're not using any sewer and water at the moment, but we would pay upfront. For the bonds that I saw in the application. Now, I don't know if the letter I sent is sufficient to start the process. Or if you would like something else, or whatever it is that you would like will comply.
Okay, so is that a question to the clerk, Sarah?
To whoever.
No, I guess I've asked clerk, clerk Sarah, is this what was required, or what?
Um, yeah, I mean. Along with the applications and the fees, if, if you're satisfied with his request that he made via email. And you want to move forward, that's.
Okay, so based on what Scott said, um, I'm okay with it. Any trustees have an opinion, have, have a problem with this request?
Doesn't need to go in front of the planning board?
No, I'm in the town. I have, I have approval from the town already.
You do have approval from the town, okay. I don't have a problem.
Okay, Vicky, Mike?
Uh, I just, I just want, I had, I had some questions and, you know, just a few things I. Just think we need to be, to discuss and be aware of, and that is, uh, this is not the first time you had a request from. Uh, for an out of, for a town hookup as opposed to doing, as opposed to a village hookup. Uh, and when we had the previous, most recent request, now take that back, second most recent request in two thousand seventeen. Uh, there issue arose of a potential moratorium on any town hookups. Uh, because of, of, of potential moratorium. Uh, at the time, well, the ma- mayor Rod Brown said. That he could not find any kind of paperwork that, or any motions made in the minutes of the meeting. When this was supposedly, uh, done in, I believe, two thousand six. And yet, I know we had, uh, and maybe Howard can, can confirm this, because he was probably at the meeting, he must have had at least. Twenty people at the meeting who, who said, that's crazy, I was there and I voted for a moratorium in two thousand six. So there could be no water and sewer hookups, and that, you know, so it, it turned into quite a controversy, so. We, we A have to be aware of that, okay, uh, whether or not it's by, it's. It's something that's actual, absolutely true or not remains to be seen. Second thing is the fact that it's, uh. I'm, I'm trying to have a discussion with Joe Spagnola, who was on the board at that time, because the letter that, uh, that. Howard submitted indicated that he had prior, he had approval from the village to be able to hook up. And yet, I don't know if there was actually a discussion, uh, at the board level to do this in two thousand ten, which is when the letter is dated. Or this is just something that, uh, Laura had put in as being, uh. Something that she'd gotten approval from the town, but not from the board, so. Uh, I think, I think we need to do more research on this before we go ahead and say, let's, let's proceed, that's all.
Okay, so anything I want to say is.
Clear, clarification. Uh, the meeting that Mike referred to was in two thousand and six, I believe, uh. Uh, Skip Safari was the property owner at the time, and he was approved for. Single family lots, and the moratorium was discussed, uh, Laura Hurley, I believe, whoever was the mayor at the time. Uh, assured Skip that what he was already approved for would be approved. Uh, Laura Hurley, as mayor reaffirmed that in the letter I submitted, that there was a pre-approved application. Uh, and I don't know if that clears up anything for you, but. It was definitely approved at the meeting when Skip Safari was at the meeting, because he was there himself, and he. It's requested that his properties be listed as pre-approved.
Okay, so look, I, I'll tell you what, um, Sarah and I discussed this before the meeting. She is gonna try to find minutes if possible, but in my mind, you know, moratorium, no moratorium, I hate to get into that. Do loop again, but in my mind, the letter from Laura is pretty specific and does grant approval. Mike, in my mind, that ought to stand, tell you the truth, even if there wasn't a board meeting, that there was a vote or whatever. We've got that letter, you know, Howard included that in his attachments, uh, signed by the mayor at the time. And specifying those nine parcels, I think it is, as being pre-approved, I think we need to recognize that. Do you agree?
Oh, yeah, I, 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 I agree based on the fact that I just was, wanted to make sure that that. That letter from, uh, Laura carried some weight, meaning that the, the village board had actually. Had actually approved it, because I was surprised seeing the date of two thousand ten, because that was quote unquote post-moratorium, and I was saying. Okay, if there's something that has been pre-approved and Howard, Howard, uh, has every right on behalf of, uh. Robert to be able to say it's been approved already, and that would, as I described to the, to, to Joe. That makes it a different animal than someone coming forward to us now, but it also did say in the letter that. Uh, that if a resolution was passed post, uh, two thousand ten on any kind of. Any kind of resolution that, that stopped any hookups for the town, then that would, that, that would cancel, or I may not be reading it correctly. So I, that's another reason why I was hesitant to say, well, let's just go ahead and approve it without. Looking more carefully at that, that's the only reason I, uh, I was hesitating.
Okay, so how do we proceed then? Um, do we need a vote of the board? What, what do we need to do here? Do you want more time to think about it, Mike? We can talk about it later. Is there, is there immediacy for this, Howard? Do you need a decision now, or?
No, there's not an immediacy, but he'd like to get it done because of COVID and his job and all other. Complacations that are arising.
All right, so Mike, what do you want to do? You want to spend some more time looking at this over?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to bring it, bring it up in, in June, if we could, as, and just table it for this meeting, I don't wanna. I don't want to approve or deny today, I'd like the chance to verify some, some of the things that, you know, that were of concern. But, uh, and, and I think just being able to do that shouldn't be, uh, it shouldn't go more than June, it should be. Yes or no, based on whatever facts we can, we can, uh, provide by then.
Okay, and then I guess I'm looking, Sarah, to tell us what the process is, do we need the board to approve it? Or are you just going to, how, how does this work, Sarah?
Um, there's a, an approval, I believe, on the application itself.
Okay.
So I, I would have to look at, I haven't seen it in a little while, but.
All right.
I'll have it all ready for the next meeting.
Well, is there a way that we can have Howard actually make a submission on the, on the appropriate form to have that, that we can?
I don't see why not.
How about that, Howard?
Okay, uh, is it all right for me to approve, put the form in for my son, who is the actual owner, and I'm representing him? Or, otherwise I'll have to. Form and have him fill what I, you, you know, he, 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 he works, I don't work, I'm here.
Well, fine, um, I don't know, Ian, are you still here?
I mean, would he be able just to scan it, san- sign and scan it?
All right, so if you want him to fill it out and sign it, and I can do the rest?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'd rather you get his John Hancock on it.
Okay, I'm sure we can work that out, I, I will copy the, I will copy what I have from the web, from your website. I will send it to him, have him sign it and send it back, and is it all right if I sign the checks that are, if we go that way? That are needed, any checks that are needed?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say yes. We'll, we'll, we'll take your money as much as we'll take it.
Yeah, money is easy to take. Thank you, Tim. All right, I will do that then.
Any more discussion?
Sarah, the person that I would be dealing with, okay?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, more discussion about that topic, otherwise we're gonna move on.
Just a quick question, so the bottom line is, we're going to, uh, find. Why? Evidence of the moratorium?
Uh, we're gonna do.
Early letter?
We're, we're gonna do a little more research on the background of the request. Um, I think we would like to be able to see, uh, what the minutes said in the vicinity of the time when Laura Hurley wrote that memo. Just as some supporting documentation, I think Mike would feel much better if he saw that the board had voted on, on that thing, all right? So that's, that's a request to Sarah, if it's at all possible, she may, you know, find out, there's no, no other record of it. In which case, then I'll go back to Mike and say, well, I think the mayor had the authority to say it, and that stands, but, uh. Let's first do some research and see if we can get some more supporting documentation.
Okay, but do we have the Hurley letter?
Yes, that was, that was attached at the bottom of the note from Howard that I forwarded to you all.
Oh, I see it, okay.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right, so can we move on?
I'm ready to move on.
Okay, let's go to the treasurer's report.
All right, good evening, everyone, hopefully you can hear me.
Yeah, we can.
All right, so, um, this is the report for the month of April, and I'm going to read from the. Ending amounts, uh, for, that was four thirty, twenty twenty one. So for tax account, that was sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty four dollars and seventy cents. Uh, general fund, three hundred and forty six thousand, nine hundred and seventy two dollars and seventeen cents. Water fund, seventy six thousand, one hundred and three dollars and forty one cents, and sewer fund. Seventy six thousand, eight hundred and thirty seven dollars and ninety nine cents. And you'll see on the bedrock account that we did get that EFC grant, so that was deposited. Um, and the fire rescue repair reserve was, is there too.
Very good. That's the five thousand, of which twenty thousand is gonna be for the, uh, our first contribution towards the repair of the roof. Of the firehouse, and the other fifteen thousand will be for the rescue squad to use for additional materials and whatever. To support their, uh, their effort.
Correct.
Okay, notice on the bedrock well, okay, the, the bedrock well accounts at three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, that's before. Uh, they paid the invoice that I listed at the top of the meeting, the hundred and sixty seven thousand, I think has not been removed out of there yet. Right?
Right, right, as of four thirty.
Okay. Right.
Um, so you guys should have gotten the operating statement that was emailed to you, um, I believe since then it's been updated, so I will. I'll have Nicole put the updated one on the Zoom link tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, I, I already discussed the fire and rescue, um, and the EFC. Um, we established the PayPal account for the village donations for the tennis courts, which is going very well. And, um, submitted some more tax forms to Duchess County, so hopefully our bills will be printed soon, so we could sort them.
Okay, those, those get mailed out June first?
They get mailed out a little bit before June first, if I can get it out there.
Okay, good.
That's all I have for treasurer.
Okay, so as far as the operating statement, I don't know if the trustees had a chance to review it yet, but I will tell you that. It's nip and tuck to the end, and that's why I really want the department heads to be sensitive to, uh, spending this month. So we can try to end up, um, on budget. Um, it's tight, it's, uh, it's gonna be close, and I just want everyone's help to do what they can to, uh. Constrain costs, all right? Um, we're right on the cusp, that's for the A fund. For the F fund, the water fund, and the G fund, the sewer fund. If you go through the expenses and revenues, you can see that we have accrued enough additional monies. That this month Karen and Sarah will be able to pay back from the F and G funds to the A fund, what's owed. Okay, then we talked about this during the budget numerous times, that we have a, a, a due to the A fund from both the F and the G. And we have now accrued enough additional revenue over expenses, and we'll be able to pay those monies back. And Karen's gonna plan to do that by, uh, the end of the month of May. So that's a very good success story that we, uh, wanted to do as far as the budget, and it looks like we've actually now gotten to the point where we will be able to do that. And pay back those monies due to the A fund. Any questions about that? That's gonna help us get the, uh, unrestricted fund balance up to an acceptable level, or closer to an acceptable level. So I'm very happy with what's been doing, what's going on there. Thanks to Scott for his ability to control expenses.
Absolutely.
Any, any other comments there? Let's move on then.
Okay, and for building department, for the month of April, we had a total of one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars collected. Um, in fees, we had six building permits issued, we didn't have any signed permits, we had no COs. Which I think, Tim, you are looking for one, so hopefully you talked to Ken. Uh, certificate of compliance, we had one, and four municipal searches. For this month. For this month, I heard that planning and ZBA will not have meetings, but I do believe that next month that ZBA should have something on the docket.
Okay. And does the ZBA have a, have a scheduled date every month?
Not that I've been told.
No? Okay. Cause I asked him to do that. All right. Let me follow up with Andy. All righty.
That's all I have.
Okay, good. I see on the agenda, I put in the year and outlook. I just told you that we are nip and tuck. And, uh, people have really worked well to get this, to bring this home. And, uh, we'll find out next month how well we did, but, uh, just keep, uh, keep your eyes focused on any kind of cost reductions you can incur. That would be great. The trust funds transfer, this is the consolidation of the three trust funds. Um, Karen's still working on how we're going to, um, make that happen and she'll report on that next month. Uh, but I just want to basically eliminate those three trust funds, create another fund of another kind that she's going to tell us, uh, exactly what the format we're going to use so that'll happen next month. All right. Uh, no more questions about the, uh, treasures or the building reform report. Let's go on to the planning board. So special request by the, uh, chair, Matt Anderson, to come and make a presentation to the board. So Matt, uh, you're up.
All right. Well, thanks for squeezing me in, Tim. And I really don't have a presentation. What I do have though is a minor request and one recommendation. The minor request is pretty simple. Um, as many of you know, like Duchess County offers a lot of continuing education classes and we're all supposed to try and participate in those. I have not been the best about it, um, over the past couple of years, but I did find out recently that they are now doing these as webinars. So you can, because of COVID, so wherever I'm traveling, whether I'm home, um, or if I'm on the road, um, those are now, uh, uh, the last one I was able to attend in person and it was very helpful. Um, and I felt guilty that I should have been attending more. So knowing that they have older classes and, and even the one that, uh, they just, uh, hosted last week, they're available on the Duchess County webpage and, um, with the approval of the board, I would like to request that we can get those hours. Even if we weren't able to attend the class, you know, live, they are available and we can watch them. And that goes for everybody on the planning board as well as ZBA.
So just so, so the trustees know, I told Matt, that sounds good to me. I think you should do that. Use the webinars instead of going to in-person training. It sounds good. He wouldn't take my word. That's why he's here to ask the trustees.
I want it in writing.
So obviously my word doesn't mean anything. So what do the trustees think?
I believe we do have a resolution accepting webinars.
Oh, is that right?
FYI.
That's even better.
So then I'm just going to tell Regina to send out an email to people on the ZBA and.
Well, wait a minute. You wouldn't take my word. So does any trustee you having a problem with them using webinars for training?
I don't.
I dare you.
Yeah, right. So, all right. I'll just, I'm going to deal with that with Regina and I'll make sure she gets an email out and we'll get links to all of the other, the, the other members. Um, another issue that came up, which I believe is a code issue.
By the way, Matt, will you, uh, copy me so I can forward that on to Andy? Cause I think the, the ZBA should do the same thing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, the other, uh, it, it is the other issue. Again, I think it's minor. It, it does happen to be a code issue. But, um, nowadays when, um, we get special permits that come to the planning board and we have to go through the process of making it public, the current process that is in place is to, um, advertise in the paper, which has always been. But honestly, a lot of people don't read the paper at all anymore. And the other one is that adjacent property owners to any sort of special use permit or anything that's coming up to the planning board, adjacent property owners get a letter. And in both of those instances, it stated when we're going to have our meeting about it. That information is not getting out, um, effectively, um, as it was brought to my attention. So Regina stated that, uh, the town of La Grange actually puts up signs. So if there's something that's coming up in front of the planning board, what they do in the town of La Grange is they put a sign up in a window, or if they don't have the ability to do that, they'll just put a sign up on a property, you know, some sort of laminated, um, notification that there will be a special hearing at the next planning board in the date and the time. Coincidentally, when I took the webinar last week, the state of New York recommends that as the best practice to put a sign up on a property so that people going by know that there is an upcoming meeting for whatever that particular use is. Um, we decided at our last planning board meeting that we were just going to implement those procedures on our own. But I do believe that it's probably something that should be changed in the code as well. Because as it's currently written, it's not really that clear. In fact, as it's currently written, I don't even see where it states that adjacent property owners get a letter. So it was just a recommendation. I know that these issues come up all the time. So if this is something that I'm supposed to help somebody on the board with or make a recommendation or I don't know how to handle it.
So first off, it's not like a good idea to do to me. I mean, just as a best practice. I think it makes sense. And talk about at the end of the meeting, now I want to start refocusing the trustees on the code update. And I'll make a note that we, we include that in as, as one of the code, the code updates we'll make.
Okay.
Your comment, your comments that you couldn't, couldn't find anything in the code that says we send out letters to adjacent, um, property owners is kind of surprising to me.
Well, that doesn't mean it's not there. It just means that I couldn't find it. It might be there and I might be looking in the wrong place.
But should we do it anyway?
Say again, Vicky?
Do we do it anyway? Don't we do it?
Yes, we do. My people, I know personally I've paid for the cost of the, uh, what do you call it? Does the special letters they send, uh?
A butters notices.
Yeah, right, right.
And it is, um, chapter two thirty dash sixty-three.
It is sixty. So see, there you go. I'm in two thirty forty-three.
It's under fees and expenses.
Okay.
All right. But the idea of putting a sign out is, is a good idea and we can add that to the code.
Agreed.
You can, you can start doing it in the meantime, can't you? Matt, you don't need the code update to before you do it?
Yeah, I, my, to, I, you're not asking, but just to put in my two cents, the planning board wouldn't have the authority to do that unless the, the town board amends the zoning law. So my recommendation would be, um, you could ask the applicant if they wanted to do it. But you can't require them unless the town board amends the zoning law to require it.
All right, fine. You can make it optional until we get the, the code update.
Okay.
All right.
That's all I had.
Thanks, Matt. Any questions for Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Ian, anything I asked you to attend to join us for the executive session later on at the end of the meeting, but anything in, in the middle of the meeting you want to talk about?
I, I don't have anything, uh, before the executive session. No.
All right, good. All right. If you go back to the agenda, there are just some things I want to provide an update to, uh, either the trustees if they aren't aware, to the population in general. So sidewalks. Um, Mike and I had a meeting with Ken and Rich Renia on Monday. And basically we described to him the, the scope of the job. We want Rich Renia is the engineering firm. That we want to do an assessment of the sidewalks in the village and, um, give us a statement of what needs to be done and what's the estimated cost of doing that work. We asked them to do it in phases. So we can do this as a piecemeal project over many years. And, um, he agreed to do that. So the next step is he's going to provide us a, um, um, a, um, job project and a cost to do the engineering work. Okay. So it's step one is to get an engineering report that tells us how much it's going to cost by section of sidewalk replacements throughout the village. Okay. And Rich Renia is going to be doing that. And he owes us a cost to do that work is the next step. Any questions about that? Okay, good. Uh, the next topic on the agenda is the Thorn Building Transfer. I've got some positive news to report there that, um, the MEKAC contract has been signed. This is between the LLC and the, um, and MEKAC. Um, and for some reason they wanted me to sign as well. And I had no problem with signing it. Um, but that now is checked off the list. There is a new issue that came up. I talked to George Whalen today. And evidently because the building is assessed at two point nine million dollars, if we did the, uh, D transfer, they would be immediately, uh, oh, owing the, uh, the taxes for both the property as well as the school, um, on the property. So what they need is the assessor to reevaluate, reassess the value of the property down to ten dollars, which is what's in the deed of the contract that we're trying to sign off to transfer ownership. And so George and I have a meeting tomorrow with Lisa, uh, who's the assessor for the town. And we're going to request that she reassess the property value. And we think that's close to the last issue. We think it's the last issue, but I have to use the word close. They're talking about a closing June. I keep, I keep forgetting to ask them what year it is. So I, I assume it's June of twenty twenty-one, but I don't know. Any questions about the Thorn Building? Okay. The next item, trustee appointment. So, um, we've had four, five candidates have, uh, applied for Kevin McGrane's position, which he resigned from. And, uh, I've had phone interviews, which with each of the five is a first step. And we're going to review the, the candidates in executive session at the end of the meeting, just to let people know that one of the five candidates has dropped out, given the, the kind of workload that, um, she anticipated based on my discussion. So we now have four candidates that we're going to discuss about in, in, in executive session. Uh, the tennis court resurfacing. There's been progress there. This is the nice, uh, thermometer that they put in place. And so you see that, um, we're now up to eleven thousand, almost five hundred dollars towards a goal of twenty-five thousand. And, uh, Vicky has helped, uh, with, uh, Sarah to make it available now to be able to use PayPal to make donations. So that's helping, uh, PayPal capability. So that's good work and progress there.
I think the, one of the important things is also Nicole's graphic has been really uh, useful to raising the profile of the campaign.
Okay, good.
Which they keep updating as the line goes up.
Yep. Okay, good. And there's the, uh, URL to actually go on line to make a donation using credit card with PayPal if you're so deemed wishing to do that. And the last item on the old business status is the gazebo. We discussed it last week, last month. Mike and I had a meeting with members from the school board. And, uh, the first follow-up was to get a Mark survey. And I did talk to Brian Houston. He agreed to do it. I'm waiting to get feedback from him about the timing and how much it's going to be. The cost is going to be split between the village and the school. So we can all know exactly who owns the gazebo. And then we'll proceed to decide what to do about it after that. Any questions about any of the old business statuses? Okay. As far as new business, I've already discussed the, uh, the golf and tennis club fireworks schedule. Uh, something else you should be aware of is that, um, HBO is doing a film that's going to come into Millbrook. They want to use the vicinity around the diner. I think it's around August. Sarah, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. August timeframe. We're yet to get the specifics of, um, what they want to do and how we're going to handle the, um, logistics, including shutting down Franklin Avenue for the time being. Um, and so as soon as I get that information, um, I'll be forwarding it on to the board and we'll also be needing, I'm sure, police help to, uh, corral the, the traffic for the time, for the filming. But that's something of interest. They're talking about, um, quite a few cars coming into the village. The, it's evidently a historic piece. They'll be, they'll be using old vintage cars, which means they'll have to clear out uh, all the, uh, residents' cars or whoever's in the village at the time for the sake of doing the. It should be exciting times. That's coming up a while later on this, this year. Okay. That's all the new business. Any public comments? They want to make while they're here. Any questions or comments from the public? All right. So let's move to board member updates. Deputy Mayor Herzog, anything else you need to add?
Uh, just that we, that I attended, uh, with you, two other meetings that we, uh, did, board want, want to be aware of. One was with the, uh, members of the historical society, officer of the historical society, who had asked us to see if there was other space in the village hall that might be available for them to be able to use for, um, sensitive documents that wouldn't really do well sitting in the basement uh, of where they have presently have occupied space. So we showed them some, some space that was, uh, what was the part of the old courthouse upstairs? And, uh, discussed the idea that we may be able to offer them, being able to use some of that space, uh, with, uh, them providing what are the shelving or whatever they would need, uh, to be able to store the items that they, uh, wanted to store someplace other than the downstairs basement. So, uh, we had that meeting and that's something that they're looking at the historical society and we'll get more information on that as they, uh, may have a proposal to give us, uh, in the near future. Uh, and the second meeting we had was, was with, uh, possible, uh, training for, for our officers to a consultant group that came in who are friends of Jared, uh, that we listened to, uh, their, that we listened to their thoughts and they said they might be giving us a proposal that might allow them to be able to, uh, be able to help run some of the trainings that we would need for our officers and be able to do it, uh, with, based on whatever their proposal is. So that's, that's, that's going to be going forward as well. So those, those meetings happened and just to make sure the rest of the board's aware of it.
I'm glad you reminded me because I thought they were going to give us a proposed contract, um, imminently. I haven't seen anything yet.
No, and, and they, we met with them, if memory serves me, in the last two weeks. So it's made, maybe, uh, it may be that they're, you know, they're still trying to come up with a proposal, but in any case, uh, it's, uh, you know, something that we'll show to the rest of the board and let our lawyer review and, and, and make sure that before we enter into any kind of agreement with the group, uh, that the benefits, uh, outweigh the, uh, potential problems that could come with, uh, whatever proposal they have. So we'll see.
Yeah, I was very attracted to it because they were offering basically free training for the sake of them being able to show that they are working with the municipality. To allow us, which is basically a, uh, advertising angle for them. So it's kind of a win-win.
It sounded like it, but you've got to be careful of what's too good to be true. So that's why we'll have to refer it to our attorney to see if by doing this, we are somehow putting ourselves in any harm's way legally. That's all.
Yep. Good point. And by the way, I don't think I ever mentioned it to Sarah, the historical society requesting the left side of the room up there where the old courthouse used to be. So I assume that you're okay because we weren't, wouldn't touch the right side that you used for the planning board. Okay?
It's fine with me.
Okay, good. Thanks. Any other questions for Mike?
It's, um, the, the guys that you talked to about training, do they have a track record with other than municipalities?
Uh, but they're not that I'm aware of that. That's, um, as I said, that's one of the reasons why we're trading slowly with this. I think they're, they're a new company. They're somebody that, uh, as I said, Jared had some familiarity with and he, he's worked with them in the past. So that's why they came to us, but, uh, obviously, uh, that's a very important point, Vicky. So we'll have to make sure that whatever they are giving us, we, we don't let ourselves open for any kind of problems.
But Mike, I, if correct me if I'm wrong, but they were, while within the newer civil police force, they were active trainers there, right?
Yes, but they have, they have experience.
They have experience as trainers within the police force that they used to be a part of.
Okay, that's important because that really wouldn't show up in the contract probably. And that's more something you'd have to have gotten from the pitch.
Yep.
Yeah, no, they appear to be extremely. Yeah, no, they appear to be extremely all extremely well qualified in that sense. I just meant that this is a new company. They're trying to start themselves almost as a business and therefore we were going to be uh, you know, if if they could hook up with us, then that would potentially give them a possibility of getting some credibility, but I don't know at what cost. So we're just going to have to be careful.
But as you said, we will get uh Ian involved in this to review what it is they propose before we do any signing.
Oh, of course, yes. And the rest of the board too. Yeah.
Okay, Vicky, anything on your mind to update us on?
Uh just well, a couple of things. We still have all the department heads here, right? Because you had asked me to talk about um getting the asset inventory moving at this meeting.
Ah, yes. I should have put you up front. I forgot about that.
Okay.
Some of them are here, but I don't know. Are the fire guys here? There's Ted. Yeah. Okay, fine. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so just uh real quick for them. So as we talked about in March, we're we're looking to create a capital improvement plan so that we can estimate our purchasing needs as well as our spending for the next five to 10 years and better do our budgets. Um to start creating this kind of a plan, we're going to need from each department head a an asset asset inventory. And the asset inventory, it sounds complicated. It's really not. Um it involves the departments coming up with um basically data for us in the form of a list or maybe even a template that Sarah and Karen can provide, because Karen actually showed me something um that she's been using. So maybe that would help actually in the preparations, but otherwise it can just be a list that we can plug into a broader schematic later. Um but each capital as asset that your department relies on needs to be on that list. So it's not recurring expenses. It's things that have a useful life of you know, at least two years, probably more like five. Um you would need to let us know which date, what date you put it in service approximately, how many years of useful life it has, how much it costs roughly. Maybe you don't have that information anymore, but roughly when it was purchased and if it's financed, uh what the payments are and when they are due. Um and also there there should be um co- a common section in the ultimate plan. We are able to tell us things like um what the asset's actual condition is. It's if it seems like it'll make its useful life. Um any price developments for replacements, sometimes miraculously the costs go down. Um any expected government programs for paying for replacements that you are aware of or new government mandates for updating or replacing um these items that you are aware of. Um now we know it's just going to be a work in progress because anybody who has a house or a bicycle or car knows, you know, things come up and changes happen. Um but by having a grip on our larger expenditures and when they're likely to come up, we will ultimately be better able to create the kinds of reserves that make sense to fund them or um be able to assess the various financial instruments that are available that we might want to take advantage of, issue debt, you know, and install them in contract, whatever it may be, and bid them correctly, or even as we assess whether there might be grants available. You know, you can't just go out and get a grant that when something breaks down. You need to plan for that uh often over the course of years. So um I think uh we'd like to start on that as soon as possible and not have to go through the next budget cycle without it. Um case in point was, you know, the fire roof.
Right.
We had more information on that earlier. Um you know, the money might have been more readily available. Um so I think, you know, the time is now and to start working on that. I don't know, Sarah, if I don't mean to put you on the spot, but does is there something like that that maybe you can ask Karen? Has in her bag of tricks?
Yeah, I'll 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 ask her.
Yeah, if not, I can I could just prepare a memo or something to the department heads with the lists of the information we need because I know.
That's a good idea. Well, let's see if Rhinebeck's got something that they're using today. And if she has even specifics in it, that might be helpful just to kick this thing off.
You know, I know Water and Sewer is already working. Um you know, has already worked with the plan that generally has the categories. Um but I don't know if they have any kind of form that they're working with, so.
All right. It's just that, you know, I I think it's a good idea. Actually, it came to light, as you mentioned, Ted came forward with the fact that we needed a new roof in the firehouse and we had done no planning for that because it was like uh duh, you know. But yet from a budget point of view, we're always scurrying around at the last second. So this would be a way to try to get us ahead of the curve if it works out. I guess the thing I'm really worried about is at what point do you feel as though you're completed? There's always going to be something. It's like owning a house. You're you're never, you're always surprised by the next thing that breaks, right? You never anticipate it. And so does this list ever have an end to it or is it just become, you know, a constant growing list? I don't know.
Well, I I I know bigger localities do rely on it and um yeah, that it there's definitely movement. I mean, it definitely changes.
Yeah.
But having gone through one bud- budget cycle with the village, it became very clear to me that there's no padding in our budget. So you know, we really need to plan for these big expend- expenditures. It's hard enough to plan for increases in costs on the recurring expenditures. Um so I think it's worth doing.
All right, so it's a good first start. If we can get Karen to give us an example of what they do in Rhinebeck. Any questions or comments from the department heads? Ted or Bob or Scott?
Um that sounds like a good idea, except the the part about the the payments and what they are. We don't uh I don't know what the payments are on currently on the vehicles and things like that. That's you know, that's something that's going to have to come from you guys.
Let's 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 start with the list.
Right. Yeah, the list is no problem.
Unexpected usable lifetime, like, you know, you've got these, you know, vehicles and here's how long you think they're going to last.
That's not a problem.
Well, let's start there and then we can start building as the as we get any more details. Let's first start with the list. All right.
Yeah, no problem. We've always had a list anyway, but just not of not as detailed. You know, we just have a list of the our assets and we can work off of that.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, keep 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 in mind in the uh emergency management plan every year that that I have to put it together. One of the things I ask for from all three departments is give me a list of your current equipment. And I realize that's not all encompassing. It's just part of the package, but that means that that there's an updated list that tells you exactly, you know, how many fire hoses, how many vehicles, how many, you know, for even for Jared, what kind of weapons they they have, you know, available for use, things like that. So that would be a that would be a helpful start, I'm sure.
Yeah, and it's it's going to be focused on asset replacement, which means things that have useful lives. And I guess maybe everything has a useful life.
Right.
Not necessarily small expenditures that fall into uh remind me of the codes, one of the code char- categories that we carry over every year to allow people to buy, you know, a vest or a gun or something smaller.
Yeah, right.
And a rolling stock or a roof or, you know, a snowblower or whatever.
Yeah.
Yep, no, good point.
Ted or Scott, any comments or questions?
No, we have a uh we we we've had that list and I I am in the process of updating that for you, Mike. I I got the copy that you left for us uh a few weeks ago. Uh so we're in the process of updating that now. Um we've we have an apparatus replacement plan. It's been in place since nineteen ninety seven. We we discussed this during the uh the budget process.
Yeah.
Um, right. So you know, we we have a pretty a pretty uh well delineated expectation of the service life of uh our vehicles, uh which are the largest expenditures, obviously. And as far as smaller loose equipment, uh basically we use it until failure, but we don't have a recommended service life for any of that smaller stuff. So it's difficult for me to quantify uh, you know, when I expect to replace it or or at what interval. Um because it's stuff that uh we just use until it breaks. It's and typically, I mean, you said two to five years as an example. We don't have anything that only lasts five years. We everything we own. You know, we expect to get twenty, twenty-five, thirty years out of. So I don't know what type, what kind of a replacement schedule you're looking, you know, how far in advance you're looking to plan. But um that we'll we'll certainly work with the list and see, you know, as far as the information you asked. What's what's here and what it costs and what projected uh replacement cost is.
Well, wait, so Vicky, how do you determine that it's capital versus non-capital?
It it really, I have to talk to Karen about it. Um it really depends, I think, on what the bank may require for a dead instrument, right? They may have different useful life requirements than um what the federal government may have for certain of the grant programs, what the state may have for certain of the grant programs. So but in terms of our own budgets here, it's to me um both longer term durable goods, you know, not the the raincoats maybe that firefighters have to wear when they go into a burning building. Um but more of, again, your rolling stock, your infrastructure needs, you know, your boiler, your roof, your um uh you know, any any rebuilding or updating you might have to do inside the firehouse. Um and 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 the bigger items like maybe a hose. I don't really know what a hose costs, but you know, some of the bigger items of equipment that take your budget well beyond that you don't have to purch- purchase frequently, but are definitely not money that you would have in your budget every year. It's a special expense. Maybe if you think of it that way. And look, again, you're not necessarily going to include everything or remember everything at once.
Yeah, it would be impractical to try to to break it down that far. But as far as major expenditures and the capital expenses, we've always considered just mostly to be apparatus. And that's that's the big one.
Yes, yeah. And 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 again, because if you make it too big, we'll just get lost in it. It's it's better to be more surgical.
Okay.
I will also do a list on on the firehouse in-house side. Um one being the the ramp in in front of the engine bays needs to be replaced probably in another four or five years.
Okay.
Um but going back to the roof, I brought this up about five or six years ago that we were having trouble with the roof. So it's not right off the bat that you know, I threw it in there this year that it has to be replaced. We were having trouble years ago.
Nobody is is suggesting that, or at least I'm not suggesting that. It's it's just good pr- practice to have it down in writing so that we have to, we're forced to look at it every year and see, you know, oh, this is coming up. And this is what it's likely to cost. It's a little more formal way of having these, you know, these kinds of expenses um before us.
Oh, yeah.
On a more regular basis.
It's always good to have that cushion there instead of scrouching around where to find money.
Right.
We we ran into that trouble a couple of years ago when the when sewer line broke in front of the firehouse.
Yeah, this is something that's a kind of a bone of contention between us and the village in that and as Tim will attest, you know, every year we do our budget process and I ask to increase the capital reserve because you know, the the cost of the things that we replace at longer intervals continues to increase, you know, with inflation. And our capital uh savings is not uh keeping pace with that. It never has.
Yeah.
And and the village, not speaking for the current administration, but in the years past has always been immensely resistant to any kind of contingency funding, like, you know, and as far as having money set aside in case a sewer line breaks or something catastrophic happens to one of our pieces of apparatus, you know, we've we've asked and asked and asked and asked, you know, can you know, can we put money aside for this? And they've always said no. So this is welcome to see this coming, but it's a little frustrating too.
Yeah, sure.
Because we've been dealing with it for so long and that there's so much resistance.
Also, by the way, I'm willing to entertain a discussion about the uh amount of the reserve for next budget. We couldn't do it this year because other stuff that was going on.
Right, yeah, we we talked about that. We'll we'll talk more about that as the.
And as far as Matt talking about the roof five or six years ago, I don't recall the discussion, but I'm sure I approved more buckets for collection of the drop. I'm sorry, Matt.
That's okay. Uh also, can I can I throw something in about the roof?
Sure.
Uh will you or the trustees do up a letter? Um or do you want us to do it on our end for the four year?
Um repayment.
Repayment?
Sure. I'll draft a letter. Send me an email what you wanted to say and who it's going to go to. I'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. And this is the agreement we have that we will be paying our half of the um cost of replacing the roof of the firehouse over four years. Um and actually, I'm waiting to see what is the actual cost going to be within the hope that we can do it in three years using the twenty thousand that we've got in that reserve, right?
Correct.
In the next three years to get to fifty four thousand or whatever it is. But send me an email with what you want in the letter. I will send that to you.
Yeah, and we won't know what the costs, what the cost is going to be until it goes out to bid.
That's right.
Final thing comes back.
Yep. But that's the agreement. It would be a payment over back over four years and not.
Correct.
No problem. Okay, Vicky.
And that the fire department was paying for half of it anyway.
That's right. Okay, Vicky, anything else you need to discuss?
Um, well, just quickly, you asked me to give you an update on the electric vehicle.
That's right, yep.
Uh efforts that we've been making. So I've been working with trustee Abregast and uh Millbrook Business Association private president Kevin McGrane um to share the information with business, the businesses in the village and the property owners that um has been coming in kind of fast and furiously regarding electric vehicle chargers. So um I think that effort has been quite aggressive on um their parts. Um we don't have, I don't think, any commitments as yet from anyone, but there certainly is an incredible amount of interest, especially on the uh you know, the businesses who may not have the property to put it on.
Mm-hmm.
Part because what's happening in the field, especially in the Hudson Valley, um and I'm only really talking about New York, is the level two chargers are uh being placed in municipalities around the valley and they're very being very aggressively marketing as marketed as in and um to both tourists and businesses and of course the the employees of those businesses. Um so we're at a point now where there seems to be a lot of interest in on car makers' part and on government's part to make this happen more broadly. So um as I reported, I think in the meeting that you didn't record, Mr. Mayor, um the state has has invested a billion dollars in reducing emissions. Um and they are making of it. So there are two options actually out there that um we're asking people in the village to consider business and and landowners in the village to consider, which is one, the level two chargers that are more broadly available, have been more broadly available and that the state will fund so you can install them for free. Um and so that's available right now. And I don't know how long it's going to be available um and when the money is going to run out or when uh the tipping point happens where it just becomes good business to get them if you want to survive. But right now the money is available if someone wants to do it. Um so that's that's one option. The other option is um that's sort of more on the horizon is to, the state wants to create a network of fast chargers. So they would charge a car in twenty to thirty minutes. Um and what uh we need to consider once we are more clear on host interests in the village is whether we want to is whether we want to, uh, provide a letter of intent saying we wish to compete to be part of this network ultimately. So, I mean, both things are tied together in the sense that we need to gauge, you know, property owner interests. Um, but one is more available right now. It's more of a, a, you know, a sure thing right now than the other. Um, and, you know, just a couple of quick comments. I mean, last year during the pan- pandemic, when we were all grounded, it seemed, the number of registrations in New York State of electric vehicles went up seventeen and a half percent, which was pretty shocking to me. Um, US News and World Report just put out their list of, uh, you know, they do all kinds of lists on what's good to buy. And, um, this one was on the seventeen best electric vehicles for twenty twenty-one. And they so go beyond, of, of course Tesla is the gold standard, but only the highest models. Now Tesla is, is selling models at price points that are very affordable. But more than that, um, sixteen other carmakers have invested heavily enough to get on this list of the best electric vehicle mo- models. And so the, you know, I mean Volkswagen, Volvo, GM, Ford have all said they're only going to sell electric vehicles, um, after twenty twenty-five, which is really right around the corner. I mean, it's astounding to me from hearing nothing to all of a sudden hearing like electric vehicles are going to happen. They're happening all around us.
Is it twenty twenty-five or thirty-five?
No, twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-five, that's tomorrow.
Exactly. So, I mean, you know, the state is, the money that they put behind helping install chargers and incentivizing the buying of electric vehicles uh, by folks like if you went out and wanted to buy a, a car, electric vehicle tomorrow, you would have, you would be remiss if you didn't check all the, um, various forms of funding that are available to help you make this leap personally, not you as a mayor. Um, but, you know, they want to put, this, this state alone wants to put eight hundred and fifty thousand electric vehicles on our roads by twenty twenty-five, and they want to create or install fifty thousand charging stations around the state.
So, uh.
Probably charging stations, public, not the ones that you, you'll have in your garage if you get a car.
Well, what do we need to do to, uh, put our, our name in the slot to try to get one of these free charging stations?
Well, I think what we need to continue doing, since we don't have, um, any land to put them on ourselves that we control, is to continue to talk to, um, the people who do and see if we can, with, um, the information we provide, convince them that it's in their economic interests to install electric chargers. I mean, it's going to take some time, obviously, for them to make a lot of money on the chargers because one of the selling points of electric vehicles is they cost much less to run than gas-powered vehicles. So, you know, so if you're cha- charging a typical battery right now, it costs you the price of electricity, right? So it's like seven to fourteen dollars or something as opposed to filling up your tank where it might cost forty to seventy dollars.
So, you, so you and Buffy are working to try to find a place in the village where we can.
Yeah, and, and, and Buffy, you please jump in, but, and, and Kevin, of course, at, at your recommendation, which I think was a good one, um, yours and Mike's were a recommendation. We're working closely with the MBA.
Good. Um, have you, have you checked with the Stewart's parking lot? That'd be a great place to put a couple of stations.
Well, we're figuring out the right approach, yeah.
It's awful clean there now. I'll, I'll be able to handle this.
Well, the thing that slays me is some of these lots are completely empty, so use them for something good. And it will attract people to our businesses. I mean, people get in their cars and know that
Right.
They can come to Millbrook and top off their engines and not have any kind of charging anxiety, like they'll run out of gas.
All right, good. All right, so you and Buffy are working that. All right, anything else?
Um, nothing on that. And then, um, I think I can say this, uh, because you reported the last meeting, uh, of your efforts with the DOT Traffic Division.
Yes.
Um, to get some traffic calming and perhaps build visibility solutions at the intersection of Route three forty-three and Benham Commons Road. Um, you've been working on this issue, obviously, for a long time and have had a certain amount of success. But they, but they initially denied your request to re-inspect and provide additional solutions. So we are pursuing an appeal, and I don't have any response yet on that. Um.
You did find someone, someone better than I could find that, that was more considering of your request. And so you had me send a letter to that person and we're waiting for a response back?
Yes.
Well, thanks for that.
Well, we're working, uh, yeah, and you sent a letter to the director and they have the ability to, to help. So we'll see if, if, uh, we've been convincing, let's put it that way.
Very good. Thanks. Anything else?
Um, only the American Rescue Plan, which you sent out, uh, the email. So one of the interesting things I determined today is that the money is actually coming through the controller's office. Our piece, the village piece, is not coming directly from the federal government. They are distributing it through the state government. So it's not the Department of Budget. It's from the controller's office.
Okay, so this is our, our piece of the American Rescue Plan, the one point eight trillion dollars being distributed to governments across the, the nation. And that email you sent me today, it said that we don't need to do anything to justify it. The money is just going to come to us in two pieces, one twelve months apart from the other, but it's going to come from the state, right?
Yes.
Am I reading that right?
In some, yeah, it's not, uh, anything we'll have to compete for. Of course, I, I have no doubt there's going to be extensive reporting requirements because there always are. And I just have to add this plug that we are prepared to get the money as soon as it's available, which it's apparently contingent on the Treasury Department's issuing regulations. So they just did it for other levels of government. They haven't done it for us yet. Um, but one of the things they say is that you have to have a DUNES number. And, and Sarah and I created that two months ago, so we're ready.
Good, all right. Thanks, anything else? Okay, Buffy, anything else you want to add to the vehicle charging or anything else you need to report?
Um, you asked me to report on the restaurants and the closing of the streets.
Yes.
Really quick, just to jump back to what Vicky was talking about, about the charging stations. Uh, Kevin has been in contact with Stewart's, the Tribute Gardens, and the Bank of Millbrook, who have most of the parking lots in the village. And, um, so we're really trying to get them on board to find a place to, um, put those charging stations.
Okay.
Because they would be really great, um, for the businesses and bringing, uh, people in to the village. Um, really quick, the, uh, most of the restaurants, um, are on, they do want Church Street closed. I mean, the deli does not particularly want it, nor does Nutches. But in the evening, Barbaro said they could, um, definitely use it. And, um, so did LeBeau. Um, the diner has actually purchased their own Jersey barriers that are going to be delivered to them and placed in front um, of the diner. They're just working on permits, which they've had some trouble with. Um, LeBeau is actually looking at getting some Jersey barriers as well and putting them currently on Church Street where they would normally have, um, their parking, like right in front of their building. So that would keep the sidewalks free and they would put the tables in those little areas where normally cars would be parked. Um, and the Millbrook Cafe really hasn't gotten back to us. Um, but we're just sort of going around and trying to get everyone's input on what they need for this outdoor dining to expand, um, the seating in the village during the season. Um, other than that, I just want the board to know that I have been asked to sit on the committee that's reviewing the comprehensive plan for this hospitality, um, project. And I've accepted that, so I'll be sitting on the board, on the committee, to review the comprehensive plan in the town on how we could possibly incorporate some type of hospitality, hotel, whatever it is. So, that's it.
Okay, let's go back to the, um, dining on the street. So, um, the diner has to get the state approval.
Yes, that's correct. They've submitted the application twice. Uh, the person they keep submitting it to has been, um, less than helpful. Um, so he keeps sending it back saying, oh, well, it can only be so many days. And they were like one day off. So they redid it, they sent it back. Um, but they are working on all of those permits to make sure that they are in compliance with the state.
Okay, and if LeBeau is going to use Jersey barriers, which will be on Church Street, so that's fine. Because that's not a state road. Um, and Nutches doesn't want the road closed. The deli doesn't want the road closed.
Yeah.
Then why would we close in the road if, uh, the only possible concern would be, um, Barbaro's, I guess?
I don't think that we've decided whether it would be a good, I think it's all contingent on LeBeau getting their barriers.
Okay.
Uh, Deirdre, um, Houston is helping through the county, trying to see if she can secure some barriers for them for free. If not, uh, Tenasi has a, um, connection where you could buy them in Pleasant Valley and have them delivered here.
Hmm.
Um, so that's what they're working on. I don't honestly think we would need to close it if Barbaro, because they said they would use the sidewalks probably this year. And, um, I think there's been a little bit of miscommunication between the man, uh, the general manager, uh, Luciano and Jessica, um, who's the day-to-day manager in Barbaro on exactly what they want to do. Um, but LeBeau is definitely interested in expanding their seating outside without taking up the sidewalk or possibly shutting down the street.
Um, okay, any questions from the other trustees about that?
No, I think the only, my concern when they closed down the street, uh, and the reason we did was because the Jersey barriers didn't seem to be a viable alternative. And the last thing we wanted was traffic potentially endangering any diners that would be in the street by having a car inadvertently, you know, go down the middle of the street. But if we're going to have barriers similar to what they have in, you know, I guess in New York City and other places, uh, that's worked out fairly well for the most part. I realize it's not a hundred, and nothing's a hundred percent, but for the most part, then that would eliminate some of the dangers you might have by having some vehicular traffic, uh, going through uh, during dining hours.
Yeah, I didn't think last year that the barriers that we had were too safe. I mean, they were, it was a little sketchy. Um, so I think what they're working on this year is definitely something that's a little, it's definitely better, it's definitely safer. Um, so we'll see. Um, I don't know what the Millbrook Cafe, we've tried to get ahold of them. They've been busy and we don't know what they want to do, so.
And that would be again for putting something on Franklin.
That would be, exactly. So we're trying to get ahold of them because they have to go through the process with the state and get all their permits and so forth. Um, last year they didn't seem to have a problem just having people out on the sidewalks. But again, I think it's just, um, it's a matter of safety.
Okay. And again, these Jersey barriers are, are not something that we, the highway department can handle, right? So, installation, removal has to be done by an external company, right?
So, where, yes, Kevin is working on who can help them install them and remove them. Yeah. Definitely not, not, definitely not something that the village can do.
Yep.
Has anybody considered the HBO filming is not going to be crazy about having Jersey barriers in front of their filming area?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, you would have to talk to Tenasi about that because I think he's more concerned about his safety and maximizing his, his business, to be honest with you. So, I think if the state lets him put them there and he's purchasing them, I think that's something for Tenasi and HBO to work out.
And I think that if that turned into be a reality, that, uh, yeah, you're right, that HBO would have to figure out a way to remove the barriers and put them back when they were done.
Maybe we can get them to install them and, and take them away.
They can afford it.
Exactly.
Right. Okay, good. Anything else, Buffy?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, the only thing on my mind is I wanted to talk about the code update. This is something we started, um, over a year ago. Um, Mike and I and, and Joe Rockford were involved in this, and we ran out of money. But now that we are entering into the new fiscal year, I want to reinvigorate this code update activity. So I want to send out an email to the board, actually going to pull out my old files, dust it off, and make, make a recommendation of how we should proceed. As I recall, there were still some fundamental things we needed to just clean up, like there's some chapters in it we should take out. There are some, uh, you made in some chapters, some simple things. And then we're going to get into the, the, the crux of the problem, uh, things that we need to update. And I wanted to just, uh, review that with the board. I'll do that through email with a recommended priority list. So I'd like you all to look at it and give me some feedback, but I want to get re-engaged on the process of updating our code because, uh, we have a lot of work to do. So, um, I'll follow up that with, uh, an email later. Any questions or comments about that?
Yeah.
I want to get back to the update thing. All right, so then, uh, the next board meeting is going to be May June ninth. Um, and with that, I'd like to make, get a motion that the board goes into executive session with just the trustees and Ian. Get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
Okay.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to kick everybody else off.
All right, before you go, I'd like to just make a comment, Howard.
Sure.
Very nice to run Zoom meeting. Uh, uh, you, you meeting was very efficiently run and, uh, I, I think you should be complimented on it. I've been at a lot of different Zoom meetings. This was a well-run Zoom meeting. That's my comment.
Well, thank you, Howard. Appreciate that. You're still going to have to pay the five hundred dollars twice.
All right.
Have a good evening.
Going to leave on that comment. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good.
Hi, Sarah.
Now, does she, who kicks? Okay. Am I kicking these people off or they just doing themselves? Remove codes. Has to, okay, so first off, I should stop recording, right?
Yes, that's, yeah, right.
Okay.
Doesn't appear to be anyone else on.
I'm going to take off this, I'm going to stop share. Okay. Ian, Vicky, Mike, Buffy. Oh, this one here. I'm sorry? I was just trying to find out where that is. That was up here? Recording? Stop recording.
Yeah.
We have a recording, yes.